There we go. How are we, everybody?
Well, perfect. We'll be getting underway in one moment.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Hold on, guys. One second. Give me one second.
Can you hear me, Kim?
Victor?
This is Victor.
Yes, we have Victor. In his sumptuous law office.
Very kind, Mr. Kelly.
Jim, I'm gonna have you start, and I'm just gonna pause it because it won't let me record. I'm gonna make a phone call. While you start the meeting, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the County Zoning Board of Appeals to order. On this being the February 17th, 2021. Quorum being present, I'd like to ask the members to please take a look at the minutes from last week's meeting, February 10th. And we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes once everybody takes a look at them.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting of the minutes of February 10th, please.
Thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Kirk. Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The minutes have been approved. Okay, our first order of business tonight is 16 Leslie Court. Take notice that the Town of Colony zoning board of appeals will hold a televised hearing on the 17th of February 2021 at 7:00 PM to hear the appeal of Robert Green from the decision of the building department manager for the town of Colony, denying him a building permit for the premises located at 16 Leslie Court. The proposed construction of a 26 by 28 foot addition with a 21.6 foot year yard setback is not compliant with the minimum 25 foot minimum rear yard setback required in a single-family residential zoning district. As stated in the Town of Colony Land Use Law, Article 6, Sections 190-24, 190-26, Survey, 190 Attachment Number 3 Dimensional Table for prior established lots. Upon the request for variance for the provisions of the code of the Town of Colony, Chapter 192 permit such construction and use and a secret determination for such appeal. Safety during the state of emergency triggered by COVID-19, this public hearing will take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman during the hearing. Any member of the public wishing to listen and view this meeting, please visit the town's YouTube channel to be, to watch this live stream. We have the affidavit of publication on notice, and this is deemed a type-two seeker requiring no further review. I see Mr. Green is here. Robert Green, good evening, sir.
Good evening. You actually have David Green here. Robert's with me. Robert's my father. He's over here. There he is. The interesting thing on this project, everyone, is that the properties are in my father's name. I'll be purchasing it from him when, when the project is through, so I'm a little bit more well-versed with it. And I'm here to assist him this evening with it. What we have here is pretty run-of-the-mill addition off the back of the garage of this house. And when we designed the proposal, there's a fence that is not in line with the property line. And we designed it as such that we thought we were in compliance. And then when we got all the plans finalized, we found out we were three and a half feet over into the setback. It fits very nicely with the character of the neighborhood. The three and a half feet does not change much, if anything. There's a lot of trees on, on the back of a buffer between the yards. And we're adding to a 1,352 square foot, a single-family residence there to, to make it more user-friendly for, for larger families. So we're just asking for some relief on that rear setback to make the proposed addition more user-friendly, so it can accommodate not only a laundry room and another full-size bathroom, but a four-seasoned room. You know, to, to, you know, it's gonna get a lot of use, let me put it that way. So, I mean, that's what we're up against, and that's our application for this evening.
Thank you very much, David. Mary, will you start us off?
Um, actually, it's minimal, minimal request, so I have no questions on this.
Thank you. Tracy?
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nick, you're next. I'm going across my, my Hollywood squares here. So, Nick?
Thanks, Chairman. David, did you, have you heard from anybody on Ross Court? This backs up to Ross Court, right?
Right, yes. In fact, you know, ironically, most of them are my existing clients. And, you know, informally, I put them on notice, and everyone's pretty excited to see me move them back into that street because that's where I grew up. My parents actually live at 12, and this is 16. And we're, we have a great relationship with everyone. So we got a lot of phone calls offering their support, and I was wondering if any negative or other comments even got presented to the board.
Okay, so you, you haven't heard any, any negative neighbor?
None, none at all.
That, that's the only question I have. Thanks, David.
No, thank you. David Rosenthal, any questions?
No, just a question. You're only, you're short three and a half feet, correct?
Correct.
And that's the only thing that the problem is. That's it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Kirk?
Uh, so Dave, the addition is already there.
No, 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 no. The addition is, is proposed. We, we drafted all the plans up. And when we did, when we discovered that the fence was not the boundary line, because without a formal survey, we were going off of what we thought was the boundary line. That, that's what created the need to get this, get the variance in order to proceed. So the addition is not there.
Oh, okay, okay. And like you said, this addition is more like for familyy kind of, uh, you know, use, more room.
Yeah, it's, it's to make the house more modern, because it's a very small three-bedroom ranch as it is, and there's, there's not a lot of actual living space. So the back of the yard also has a pool, and this addition will kind of like encompass, it'll enclose both the deck and the pool. And if you saw the property itself, it, it just fits perfectly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Michael, anything from council?
No, I have no problem with it. The, obviously, a family need, and neighbors like, sure, we would have heard from them if they had objections. So it's fine with me. Good luck, David.
Thank you.
Okay, well, hearing no other comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve the variance.
Mr. Chairman, okay.
I will.
Kirk, Kirk will second it, and we'll move, any further discussion? Seen none, we'll move to a vote. Let's see, Mary, remember Nardolillo?
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Swanson.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Vigiani.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Rosenthal.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Hung.
With the motion.
And the chairman votes with the motion. It's hereby unanimously approved. David, thank you very much, and good luck, and welcome back to the neighborhood.
And thank you very much for everyone's time on this, and especially Mary's cat, who I see in the background. I, I have the same photo bombing problem with my cat, who I'm surprised is not here at the moment. So everyone in, have a good rest of the evening. Appreciate your time. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is One Nickelby Court. Take notice that the Town of Colony zoning board of appeals will hold televised hearing on the 17th of February 2021 at 7:00 PM to hear the appeal of Victor Carbonaro, for Governor Law from PC, the agent for Ernest Brown, from the decision of the building department manager for the town of Colony, denying him a building permit for the premises located at One Nickelby Court. The proposed construction of a six-foot fence and planting of Arbor Rite with, within a no-cutting or building area is not permitted, as stated in the previously granted variance numbers 04-018. Upon the request for variance from the provisions of the code of the Town of Colony, Chapter 192 permit such construction and use and a secret determination for such appeal. To protect the public safety during the state of emergency triggered by COVID-19, this public hearing will take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman during the hearing. Any member of the public wishing to listen and view this meeting, please visit the town's YouTube channel to watch a live stream. The affidavit of publication is duly noted, and this has been deemed a type-two seeker requiring no further review by this body. Victor, good evening, sir, and welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a long time. And I too appreciate the grandchildren and animals in the background. I think it's, uh, very nice. So before we get started, I'd like to know if everyone has these rather large maps that I've submitted. And if so, could you just open up the two maps? One of them is a map prepared by Ingles and Associates with coloring on it, and it's got little dots, one through, looks like 16. Does everyone have that, that map?
Yes. Everyone should.
Okay.
Mary's very inquisitive. And, and Kim, you're prepared to put these up on the screen at some point, if needed?
Kim, are you there?
See? Yes, there we go.
Oh, excellent. All right, so that's not the map I was talking about, but we can use that to start with. That's, if you look at that map, that was, oops. Kim, could you go back? That's the first map I talked about. If you go at that one right there. If everyone can see that map, you'll see the lot, and you'll see the home on the lot that's being built. If you could look just below the one in the end, you'll see the home. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
That's it, right there. And then just as you're looking at it to the right, you'll see two parallel dotted lines. And believe it or not, that is a very, very large easement that runs through this property. Can anyone see those two dotted lines that run parallel to each other?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So, Kim, if you can now put up the other map. All right, perfect. So I'm going to, first of all, state that my clients are here, Mr. and Mrs. Brown. But this is a map that I'm gonna talk to you about. But first, a little bit of background. You're probably wondering why we're here. But I'm gonna tell you why we're here. So back in 2004, I came before this board. And the board granted a variance for the reconfiguration of this property into three lots. This lot that you're looking at on this map is Lot 1 Nickelby. And actually, you're looking at all three lots. One Nickelby is the one with most of the little dots on it. And then at the end of the cul-de-sac is Three Nickelby that already has a home on it. And then just below, as you come in on the road to the left, is, what's the address on that one? Two Nickelby? Okay, and there's a home on that also. So anyway, the variance that I sought back in 2004, hard to believe it was almost 17 years ago, came with conditions. And I attached a copy of the variance, number 04018, with the conditions. And the reason these conditions were there were, some of the neighbors had concerns, wanted to ensure that their buffer was maintained. And so what came out of this was, there was a requirement that there be buffered maintained on Eva Street. And Eva Street, as you can see, is just on the other side of this three-lot subdivision. You can see Eva Street up on the top. So it was a 50-foot from the back lot of Three Nickelby, 30 feet from the front lot of Nickelby. And a buffer facing Anna May Lane, which is down on the right, was required to be 50 with no building, no cutting. And the side facing the undeveloped side, which was, or behind two, would be 30 feet. In addition, they mandated that the size of the home that's my client is building be no more than 2,800 square feet of living space. And the home that my client is building is how many square feet of living space?
2,000 to 2,300 if you include the storage area.
All right, 2,000 to 2,300 if you include the storage area. So as stated, the other two homes have been built on Lot 2 and 3 Nickelby Court. And the reason we're here is that back in April of 2010, the owner of Three Nickelby Court, Court wanted to install a six-foot-high privacy fence. And if you look at this colored map that's up in front of you, you look all the way to the back, and you'll see that purple color jig-jag line there. And there's numbers 15 and 16 on it. You can barely make it out, but it is 15 and 16. And if you can see the darker line on the edge of the property, you'll see with Xs on it, that's the fence that the owners got a variance to, from this board, to construct a fence along that property line. The Town of Colony Building Department determined that the placement of that fence needed a variance because of these required buffers from the variance I got back in 2004. And that's really why we're here tonight, okay? So, but if you look at the photos that I've attached, Kim, would you be able to bring up photos 15 and 16? For the board to look at? Kim, are you there?
I'm sorry. I'm having some technical difficulties here.
Well, your photo looks very good, though.
Well, thank you. All right, are we going to?
15?
Let's see which ones are out here.
Nope, keep going.
I'm zoomed in a little too far here.
It's all right.
Is this 15? Give me a second. There you go.
Okay, so can the board see 15?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the fence that's located in the area of the map that I just showed you. And you can see the fence that was constructed after the variance was granted in 2010. But you'll notice something that you don't see, and that's, there's no buffering there. And as I explained to the board, the, there was a requirement for a 30-foot-wide buffer, no cutting or no building. Now, this is, this lot is not owned by my client, was never owned by my client, but it's there. And I'm just saying, saying that the fence is up, and the board granted the variance, and I just wanted to show you that. Okay, so, Kim, if you could go back to the map with the colored dots on it? Okay, so basically, what my client wants to do is put a fence up along the rear of his property, which abuts the Eva Street property, as you can see, as well as a fence along the left side of his property line, which is just above where the cul-de-sac is, as you can see. So if you, Kim, wouldn't mind bringing up, I want you to all look at photos 1 and 2 on this map. And I'm gonna take you now to a photo of 1. That photo 1 shows you what the corner of my client's property line looks like, it looks like on the back. And you can see it's got that white fence that appears to be a six-foot-high fence. Mr. Brown is shaking his head yes, along with a, a chain-link fence, we'll call it. Now, the chain-link fence runs along the side of my client's property. And if you look at the photo to the right, that's photo 2. That shows the, the chain-link fence on the back of my client's property, which is an Eva Street home that you're looking at. And to the right, you can see a part of the chain-link fence to the right going, it's just off the picture, but you can see it. And that area there is an area that was required by the board to have a 50-foot no-cut buffer. My client did not touch this property, but you can clearly see there's nothing there but lawn. He didn't do it, but I just wanted to show you that since the variance was granted in 2004, there's been changes made in these no-cut areas, and they haven't been done by my client. But anyway, he owns that property. Is that correct? Yeah, so that's part of his lot, number one. So if you now go back to the map, Kim, and you look at photo, you look at the dot number 3. And it's kind of like in the middle. That's it. And then if you can bring up a photo of 3, Kim? Now, this is a photo that's taken by my client looking from his lot to the rear stake of his rear property line. My client did not create this area that's, appears to be removed of debris, not debris, removed of trees and buffer. But according to my client, it shows an area where people cut through, going from Eva Street, I'm sorry, going from Eva Street through the property, onto my client's property, and then wherever. My client did not do this. He didn't take any trees away, but it's there. And if you look at the next photo, number 4, you can see a dead tree. And in fact, if you look closely, you'll see other trees that aren't in very good shape either. That's one of the things my client wants to do, is remove the dead and dying trees. Because they're in the buffer zone, he hasn't done so, and that's why we're standing in front of this board tonight. So if you go to photo 5, Kim?
Mm-hmm, I'm there.
Photo 5 is a photo that my client took on the back of his property line, looking back towards, what's the name of this? Anna May 5. And you can see, can you see the stake that's in the foreground?
Right here?
Yep. Well, at least, Kim, you're following my directions beautifully. So, anyway, you can see the stake. That's the rear property line. So to the right is my client's Lot 1, to the left is the rear of the properties along Eva. There's an area there that's been, you can see there's no trees or buffer, okay, to the right of the stake. And then if you look at photo 6, that's another photo that my client took close to his property line, rear property line. And that shows a fenced-in area that's owned by, I believe it's Mr. Elliott. Go to photo 7. Photo 7 shows another photo in the general area, a location of where this fenced-in area is that is to the rear of Mr. Elliott's property.
Victor, is that number 9?
Nope.
That's photo 7.
No, not photo 9. Is that number 9 Eva Street?
No, it's 7.
7, thank you.
It says lands of Wayne D. and Warren Sibley.
Sibley, okay, thank you.
That's now Mr. Elliott's. Okay, and then to the right, you'll see photo 8. This is another photo taken by my client in another area. Within the buffer area, you can clearly see these trees are dead. And these are, again, some of the trees that my client wants to remove because they're dead, decaying, and they're dangerous. If you go to photo 10, Kim, please. We're just following along the rear of my client's property. Photo 10 is a photo that my client took basically on his prop, left-side property line, looking back towards rear of Eva Street property owners. It shows what appears to be brush and concrete. My client did not put that there, but one of the reasons why he'd like to put fence up is to, for his own privacy. If you go to photo 11, basically taken in the same general area, you can see debris and bits and pieces of that concrete that my client did not put there. Photo 12 is another photo taken of the rear of Mr. Elliott's property. That fence you see is basically on my client's property. And if you bring up photo 13, I'm sorry, it is on, not my client's property, but Lot 3. Photo 13 basically shows a stake that my client had placed by advanced engineering and surveying a few months back. And it kind of shows 7 Eva Street property, my client's piece at One Nickelby, and 3 Nickelby, which is the home we were just talking about. And you kind of see the rear property. And 14 basically shows that that stake was removed, not by my client, but it's, it's gone. So if you then would bring up the lettered, do you have A there, Kim, that you can put up?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, here, this is photo A. So my client, when he started the foundation of his home, when did you start it? Approximately August. August. We had some storms come through, and you can see photo A and B where there are dead trees that came off of the buffer area, fell onto and within the area of where the foundation was being located. Just proof that there are some pretty bad trees back there that really need to be taken care of and removed. Photo C and D, Kim? This is just further evidence of dying and decaying trees that are falling and broken down. And my client is concerned that these trees are gonna end up falling on his property. And he has had discussions with at least one of his neighbor on Eva Street, who had requested that certain trees that are dying or decayed be removed that's within this buffer area. But again, recognizing that there are these conditions that were placed on the 2000, 2004 variance, my client hasn't done that, and that's why we're in front of this board. So what we're asking for is really nothing different that was granted, that was, that was, then was granted by this board for Lot 3 Nickelby on 4/1910, which is a modification of the conditions of the 04018 variance, which would allow Mr. Brown, who's constructing his own home on the property, as I showed you a few minutes ago, to install a fence along the north and west property line. Now, Kim, if you can bring back that photo with the lots on it and the little dots. The north side would be the rear of his property, which would border the rear of Eva Street properties, which is kind of along where you see all the dots. You can also see along the right side that I showed you in photos earlier, 1 and 2, there's a fence that's already along his right-side property line that he didn't put up with it, but his neighbor put up, as well as part of the rear of his property line. Again, all within this no-cut buffer zone. But my client wants to continue the fence along the rear of his property, which in my application, I said south, I meant to say north, and the west property line over on the left side, right there between, no, no, between Lot 1 and 3. That's just above where the cul-de-sac is, Kim. That's the property line. Keep going to the right. Keep going to the right. Now, you, you know where the property line is? It's, it's just to the right of the cul-de-sac, and it just goes up.
Here's the cul-de-sac, right?
That's correct. And then if you go one inch to the right of the cul-de-sac, you'll see the property line. That's it. That's the property line. Boy, there's something to be said about being in person, but anyway, we're doing the best we can. So, so you'd like to, to put that vinyl privacy fence up. You'd like to remove the scrubbing dead trees within the 30-foot no-build, no-cut buffer zone. And you'd like to plant Arbor Viti inside this proposed fence. And after the grant of the 2018 variance, two of the rear neighbors to Lot 1 have removed and cut, obviously, within this 30-foot buffer. And so the evidence that I've just shown you in photo shows that, you know, when you look at the criteria that you look at for something like this, which is a modification of the 2004 variants, you can clearly see that when you do a balancing test, the benefit to the applicant versus detriment to surrounding properties, you can see that this would benefit not only my client, but also benefit surrounding properties, because what my client is looking to do is, you know, create a privacy fence to create further buffering and also to get rid of the dead or dying trees, which are shown in the photos that are dangerous and have already, portions of which have already fallen on my client's part of his building that he was starting with the foundation. So it would also protect my client from anyone wanting to cut through the property, which I showed you in one of the earlier photos, I think it was number three, where people were cutting through. So that's pretty much it, members of the board. I think when you look at the criteria and you look at the questions to whether or not there's going to be any detriment to surrounding properties, clearly, in my opinion, there won't be. Whether or not this is a substantial request, I humbly believe it's de minimis, given the fact that there are currently only three reconn- there are currently only three reconfigured and approved lots that homes are being built on. And I didn't know this until I did this back in nineteen, or 2004, that nineteen eighty, believe it or not, there was a fourteen lot subdivision approved for this property, which was never built, obviously. So clearly, there's going to be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. And there wouldn't be any detriment to nearby properties by the granting of this proposed modification of the variants that I got back in 2004 for the reasons articulated in my comments. And I also talked to the board about the substantial twenty-five foot wide water line easement that passed us through my client's property. And I pointed it out to you when we first started. It substantially limits where the, any home can be built for obvious reasons. And also, as shown on the enclosed site plan, Nickelby Court, where my client's building, is fifty-six thousand three hundred one plus or minus square feet, which is three, over three times the size of a minimum lot size that we now require in an SFR zone, single family, which is eighteen thousand. So by virtue of everything I've given the board, the photos, the information, I believe the board should favorably consider this application. The, the last issue is whether or not it's a self-created hardship. And I submit to the board that I suppose you could say it is. But when you look at the totality of circumstances here and what the photos show and what the evidence is and the limitations on the developability of this lot because of that twenty-five foot easement, as your eminent counsel knows, in an area variance, a self-created hardship is evidence, but it doesn't preclude the granting of the requested variance. Plus the fact that the board has already granted the, almost the exact same variance just a couple, three years ago to lot three Nickelby Court. The only difference is we're looking to remove the dead trees. It appears that three Nickelby Court has no trees or scrub brush or any type of buffering, even though the 2004 variants request or required it. And that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Victor. Mary, anything?
I would like to ask, that thirty foot wide buffer where the trees are dead, is that entirely located on your client's property?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question.
Thank you, Mary. Tracy?
How much of the, the buffer does, will the fence cut into?
I didn't hear you. Could you answer, ask that again?
Yeah, how much of the buffer does, does your client's fence cut into?
Six inch strip.
Okay.
It's maybe, it would be right along the property line.
Okay.
Um, David?
Question on fallen trees. It was my understanding it happened during a storm when I had my house on out by drive, that whoever's lot the trees fall on to is responsible for the removal, not whose lot the trees were originally on. I had trees come down, took out part of my fence and landed in my yard. And I was responsible, my insurance company was responsible for taking them out because it was on my property, even though it belonged to my neighbor. Is that the case in here with the downed trees?
If you asked a question, Dave, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't hear it because my client was asking me a question while you were asking me a question. So could you?
Just curious, who's responsible? Is your client responsible for the downed trees on your client's property?
My client would be responsible for downed trees on his property. Is your question that, or if his trees fall on somebody else's property?
No, if the trees that are already down that are on his property. He's responsible for those.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I had.
They're his trees. I mean, they're, they're within that thirty foot buffer, which is his also.
Okay.
Nick?
Chairman, do we have members of the public on this?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I'm going to withhold my questions till I hear from the public.
Okay, Kirk?
Okay, hold a second. Okay, so I think you, you said it, but I just want to confirm. So the fencing would be in the back and also along the line with the number three.
Correct.
The property. Okay. Okay, all right. So basically, I'm trying to look at the map. So how, how, how much is the, the length? Are we talking about the, these fencing?
If you bring up the map.
Right.
Can you, can you just bring the map up? Okay, so you see the map that's in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. The fence would be along the rear property line. Right?
Yes.
On the rear, and then it would be along the side property line to the left.
Okay, all right. Let's file this.
You ask how long? If you look at the left side yard, it looks like it's a one hundred and eleven point five two feet, so the fence would stretch along the area, correct? And would it also stretch along the fifty-two foot? No, it would just go to the hundred and eleven foot point, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't go all the way down to Nickelby Court. You see where I'm talking, that kind of area? So it's top there.
Okay, all right, got you, got you. And what type of fencing your client, your client plan to put in?
Six foot high vinyl fence. You have a decision on the color? No decision on the color yet. I suggested char trues, but he wasn't, I'm kidding. It's normally white, and they do have to probably green. It's either be a, a green or a brown.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
So Victor, if I understand your presentation on the maps correctly, the fencing that will be along the rear of the property basically encompasses number nine Eva, right? And, and there's only, and then there's only fifteen foot of fence that would butt up to number seven, is that correct?
Correct.
This is seven.
Right, and then, and then at the, what, what I'm going to call, it reminds me of the four corners in the southwest US where the three properties come together. Then the fence would then come down from that and really just a butt on three Nickelby. Okay, so then the, the, the thirty foot buffer will still be in place, and then, does that then give the owner about a twenty foot backyard? Is that pretty accurate?
Yes.
That can be landscaped any way they want.
That's correct.
And, and so what you're looking for is just some de minimis relief within that confines of the buffer to remove the dead trees, the brush, and the concrete, however that got there.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I understand we have some members of the audience, Kim, that would like to comment on this project?
Yes. We have Andy Britt.
Good, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. I, I, I'm here on behalf of Tim Elliott, who's the owner of seven Eva Street, which is up on the, the top left corner of, of the map that's currently on the screen. We oppose this request for relief for a number of reasons, which I'll get into, but first, let me give you some background. Mr. Elliott was actively involved in the discussions and deliberations in 2004 when the original variance was granted. And the reason there is a no cut and no build, very important to remember, it's also a no build buffer, not just a no cut buffer, was included as a condition at that time, is because there was an agreement between the applicant and Mr. Elliott and some other neighbors, that they would withdraw their opposition to the requested relief in exchange for that condition being placed into the variance. So it was an agreed to condition that caused the neighbors to drop their opposition to the variance. So the variance arguably would never have been obtained unless that condition was placed into it a- as agreed by the parties at the time. So what we have now is a situation where, and, and I give the applicant credit for playing the real long game, but agreeing to something to make opposition go away, and then sixteen years later, coming back and seeking to remove it. I, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's a situation you as a board want to get into. I can't speak to what happened on the variance that was granted for three Nickelby, but I can state that it was, in my opinion, improperly granted. There was a restriction in place that this board placed in 2004 per agreement. That, that, that agreement, you know, variances, as you know, run with the lands, so do their conditions. The, the, the parties to that agreement were consulted when, when that variance was requested for, for three Nickelby. And I can't speak to it, I wasn't involved, but it can't be used as precedent in this instance because two rights don't make a wrong. I would also add that the map reference, which is included on the advanced map that we're looking at, is a map reference to an Ingalls map in two, last revised in 2006 that includes the no cut buffers. So to the extent that that's a filed map showing a no cut buffer, that variance, even though it was granted, it was still illegal for them to place a fence because they were in violation of a condition on a filed map. The same is true in this instance. If, if the planning board had approved in 2004 this map, then they would need to be involved in, in a request to remove that condition. And if it's a filed map, then the map would need to be altered and that condition removed. The fact that you grant the variance, you can't grant the variance from a condition or requirement or restriction on a filed map. You can only grant them from the zoning code. So even if you considered removing the condition from the variance, it would still be on the map and there, there would still be a prohibition upon cutting or building in, in the buffer. Along with that, I disagree that this is a type two action under SECA. It is an unlisted action. There is a legitimate question of whether or not the planning board needs to be, be brought in as an involved agency. You've already illegally segmented the secret review process by granting the variance on the three Nickelby, which was not in consideration, and my understanding was done as a type two action, although it would be an unlisted action. There is no, to my knowledge, based upon the information I obtained from the town through a few information requests, any short environmental assessment form filed with this application, which by itself prohibits you from taking any action because it's in violation of the secret process. And again, I believe it's an unlisted action, not a type two action, so some type of determination of significance wo- would be required. The, the concerns my client have are manifold, but they're not primarily to the cutting of the dead trees. That I would submit that's a red herring. It's the building. There's no building in the buffer, and, and now a fence is proposed to be built through the buffer. And, and, and that's ju- just not acceptable. That was the agreement in 2004 that there would be no build and it would be a buffer. If, if you look to the pictures, five, six, and seven, there's a significant, significant vegetative buffer. There's no question when you look at those pictures, there's a vegetative buffer there. The applicant is imperiling the health, safety, and welfare and acting as a detriment under the area variance test by removing a vegetative buffer. If you remove the no cut restriction or the no build restriction, then that buffer is gone. If you allow a fence, then the benefits of a visual vegetative buffer are destroyed because the intent was a vegetative buffer. Candidly, if Mr. Elliott and his neighbors would have agreed to a fence or wanted a fence in 2004, they would have said so. They didn't. They agreed to a vegetative buffer. In, in terms of the area variance test, whether or not the benefit can be achieved by some other means, sure. If, if it's privacy, arboretum. I, I believe the application already includes that there will be arboretum behind the fence. If you, if you want a buffer and you want privacy and you want screening, make it vegetative. It's a vegetative buffer now. You don't need a variance. The, the benefit can be achieved through a vegetative screen. Whether or not the, it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, of course it is. That, that buffer has worked and it's been in place since 2004. As party agreement, that's what the neighbors wanted. It's been successful. And now by proposing to remove it or build through it, build a structure through it, you are creating an adverse effect from what was there and what was agreed to. I, I, I think that, obviously, I'm not going to get into the self-created. It's clearly self-created. It's the applicant's property. It, it, it's his buffer. He's now requesting to go back on an agreement that he made or that was made in 2004. That's clearly the very definition of, of self-created. So based upon all of those items, I don't believe you can act this evening. I don't think you should act favorably on the merits. I think it should be denied. And I also think further investigation needs to be conducted as to what is prohibited along that town of Colony, City of Water Fleet Reservoir or Pipeline buffer on whether or not a fence is even allowed across that easement, which traverses the property. Because my understanding is that if a fence is there, it shouldn't be. If it's proposed, it can't be. So it's a whole nother element of this application that, that needs investigation. With, with that, I'll answer any questions anybody may have, but I don't believe you can act this evening. And, and I do believe that on the merits of it, you have to honor the agreement that was entered into in 2004, and you don't have the ability to now modify that condition. And I also think it's an unlisted action and a secret process is required.
Any questions from the board at this point in time before I let Victor comment? I have one question. Was, was it the intent? Andy, at the time, I, I assume you've read the transcripts from 2004. So was it clearly the intent that a fence would be considered building at that time?
A couple of things. I, I didn't read the transcript. I've gathered my information from my client who actively participated in 2004. And the agreement was a, a vegetative buffer. I don't believe a fence was ever something that the neighbors wanted or encouraged at that location. So it was a no cut, no building buffer at that time, is which, what, what they agreed to in order for the variance to be granted.
Okay, I'm just looking for clarification on what they meant by no building, if that, if that was intended to include a fence also at that time. And thank you.
I can answer that for you, I'm sorry.
Okay. And what, what did you mean by a field map issue? That's a term I don't think we're familiar with the laypeople on the board?
I'm sorry, that's, and that might be a Long Island accent coming out. A filed map. F I L E D, yeah, I apologize. If, if the map, and I don't see an indication on the Ingalls map itself, which I have a copy of, and that's the map reference from the advanced map. But if that Ingalls map is filed, then there's a no cut buffer restriction on a filed map. So it would be a violation of that restriction irrespective of whether or not they obtained the variance to do anything in that area.
All right, thank you. Any other board members at this time? Michael, do you have anything to add before we go back to Victor?
I just want to get a little clarification if we can. The, I see on the back property line, it looks like it's showing a chain-linked fence. It's the 74.76 there. Does that exist? And the proposed, I can see the buffer line here, but I'm seeing a chain-linked fence that's marked on the diagram.
I hear.
Yes.
I can speak to that if you want to hear me. This is Victor.
Sure, Victor.
When my client, the answer to Mike's question is that fence has been removed because when my client had the property professionally surveyed, that chain-linked fence encroached onto his property. So my client went and spoke with the owners of that property and they removed that. If you look further to the left, you'll see at the intersection of Mr. Elliott's lot, you'll see an area that's 20 by 15 with cedars. And what I find disingenuous from Mr. Brick's argument about how there should be no encroachment or building or destruction of green space between this area. That area is, has been cut out, as is evidence from the photo. If you go and look at, pull up X or photo 12, you'll see that there's a row of arbivitae that was not, that's on Lot 3 Nickelby. It's not on my client's property, but that's behind Mr. Elliott's property. So certainly my client didn't do it. I don't suspect that the owner of 3 Nickelby did it. But if you bring up the other map, the one with all the dots on it, for a moment.
There's 12. Want to bring up the map?
So that's, the fence that you're looking at is Mr. Elliott's fence. And it's on the property owned by 3 Nickelby. In the buffer zone. So to listen to the comments made by Mr. Brick on behalf of Elliott that there can't be any encroachment on this and there's a filed map, and if you do it, it violates that rule. Well, then he's stepping on his own toes, I'm afraid to say, because that is encroaching within the buffer area. And also, there is a short EIF that was filed with this application. I think Mr. Brick erroneously stated otherwise. I think he said that there was none. I filed it with my papers, as I do with all of my papers. So it is filed. So the board obviously has the right to modify these conditions, and it's done it many, many times before. And it has every right to do it now. I totally disagree with Mr. Brick's comment that the board has no right to do that. And I have read the transcripts and it's part of your record from the meeting we had. And when I quote Mr. Elliott, he says, "I had a discussion with Victor. I support the project with three conditions. There would be a 30-foot no cut, no build zone behind the lot on Eva Street that would be deed restricted, running with the land. There would be a deed restriction that would prevent the construction of any new residents back there after the three lots are built, meaning that they couldn't further subdivide it and build another lot, another home. And there was a water line easement that ran through Mr. Elliott's property that he wanted to be basically removed and have the water line easement essentially come off of Teresa up through the property, which my, anime, which my client agreed to do. So to sit here and say now the things in the comments that Mr. Brick said, I can only use one word, and I think it's disingenuous and inappropriate.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, first of all, I resent being accused of being disingenuous. That's not fair, Victor, and you know that. I'm presenting an application. I've presented the proper posture that this board should take. It is a condition on a variance that runs with the land. I would just refer you back to the quote that Victor just quoted my client stating that he wanted a deed-restricted 30-foot, no cut, no build buffer. And that's what was agreed to in exchange for removal of the opposition to the variance at the time. I wasn't there, but he quoted it. So that's actually helpful to me.
And no part, no part of this variance mentioned one word about a fence. It's no build. No building.
I agree with you. It's a no build, and now you're proposing to build a fence. I agree.
Andy, let me ask you this question. If I'm understanding what Victor says about the cedars that encroach on the buffer zone, did Mr. Elliott plant those cedars?
I'd actually like to be heard on this matter. This is Tim Elliott.
Oh.
I'll let Mr. Elliott speak.
At that original meeting in 2004, we were provided with maps by Victor that failed to show any encroachments. I'm mowing the exact same footprint that my predecessor and interest mowed. And if you go back to picture 12, Kim, if you'd help me out with that.
Hold on, give me a second.
Okay, thank you. There's picture 12. You look at the large red maple just to the right of center, that was planted by my predecessor and interest. And if you look beyond there, you see the edge of the fence surrounding our swimming pool. That was put up by the predecessor and interest as well. So we've been mowing the same footprint as the predecessor and interest has. In fact, we planted this row of arbivitae's to the left. If anything, we shrunk the encroachment and added to the buffer zone. I feel like Victor and his client defrauded us by failing to show purposely those encroachments at the time that they originally brought this in 2004. Because they promised us a 30-foot buffer. We thought we were getting a 30-foot buffer beyond the area we were mowing because there were no encroachment showing on the map. Now they come back 17 years later and they pretend like I created this encroachment in the intervening 17 years, and that's not the case at all. If anybody's being disingenuous here, it's clearly Victor and his client.
Mr. Elliott, who planted the arbivitae within the buffer?
Because we thought those were on our property, because we were provided a map by Victor at the 2004 meeting that showed no encroachments. We believe that at the time to be our property. Because we were already mowing where those arbivitae's are, and my predecessor and interest mowed where those arbivitae's are. So we lost part of that 30-foot buffer because of this encroachment that we weren't even aware of because they failed to put it on those maps in 2004. Did their surveyor make a mistake? I doubt it.
Kim, it's Mike Gary. The fence that I'm looking at with the, it looks like a blue something.
That's a dog pen.
Okay, that's on your property and that's in the buffer?
I don't know where that property line is, to be honest with you. I've never had my property surveyed.
Okay, well, the, when was that built?
I put up the dog pen. The predecessor and interest put up that giant red maple and beyond that, the fence for the pool.
All right, well, the fence that you're talking about here, that's in the buffer?
Allegedly. I don't have, I've never had my property surveyed. And they provided us with maps at the 2004 meeting that showed no encroachments whatsoever. And my predecessor and interest was mowing all the way out to the arbivitae's, wherever the encroachment's showing on that map. I would not have agreed to this three-lot subdivision if I'd have known that the footprint that I was already mowing was partly into this 30-foot buffer zone that I was being promised. Further, I'd like to point out that the buffer zone was supposed to be a quid pro quo. We'll give you this buffer zone if you give us this three-lot subdivision. We triple our money by building this three-lot subdivision and we give you the buffer zone. If you allow them to put a fence on the outside of the buffer zone, then the neighbors surrounding that are losing the buffer zone. Only the person on the interior of the fence has the buffer zone. Then we have a fence. After all this time. Finally, I'd like to say that I went to the town when they applied for the building permit. They put right in his building permit. We'll give you the building permit, but you have to agree you won't put up a fence in that buffer zone and you won't cut anything in the buffer zone. And they agreed to that. And now they have the house 80% built, and now they come back and say, oh gee, now we have the house 80% built. Thank you very much for that building permit, but now we want to change the terms of the building permit that we just agreed to six months ago. Those are my objections.
May I please speak?
Yes, Victor, go ahead. Thank you.
Could you please bring up photo 13? That's, photo 13 is the corner stake between Mr. Elliott's property, my client's property number one and Three Nickelby. So you can clearly see that that was placed, but it was ripped out on the next photo. My client didn't rip out the stake. Mr. Elliott indicates that somehow we misrepresented when we were in 2004 that there was, somehow his predecessor was cutting lawns that was on other property, let's say Three Nickelby. There was lawn there. Therefore, there was nothing to show. We didn't put the arbivitae there. Mr. Elliott put the arbivitae there. We didn't put the fence there, so there was nothing to show. So to sit there and try to twist this around and somehow we misled people into thinking where the buffer wasn't, where it wasn't, that's just not true. The fact of the matter is, is I'm sure Mr. Elliott, as an attorney, could have gotten a survey to see where his property ended. And it's fine that the previous owner may have cut that lawn, but there was lawn there. You just heard him. He said he put the arbivitae there, thinking that it was his property. Perhaps maybe he should have gotten a survey or figured that out. But I don't think it's my client's fault that he didn't come to Elliott, or I didn't come to Elliott and said, oh, by the way, there's lawn that encroaches within this area at the time. We didn't put the arbivitae there. He just said he put it there. The predecessor didn't put it there. The predecessor didn't put the fence there. That is this dog running path. And clearly, to state that he doesn't know where the property line is, photo 13 clearly shows where it is. So, you know, I'm just amazed at how this is being twisted around. I'm sorry?
And he provided a survey to us showing his property was only 49 feet from his house.
My client is saying that we were provided a survey by Mr. Elliott showing where his property line was. I don't recall that, but this is what my client is telling me. So anyway, again, I don't really see how Mr. Elliott can come before this board and say, well, somehow we misled him into thinking. Clearly, he's inside the buffer zone. And he planted the arbivitae. He put the fence up. And to sit here and say, well, I don't know where my property line is, when I'm being told now that he had a survey. Again, I don't like the smell of this, believe me. Thank you.
Completely false. I did not have a survey. I never provided a survey to Ernie Brown. And this stake that's in the ground in picture 13, where was that stake in 2004, Vic? That's what I'd like to know, because it certainly wasn't there then, and none of that appeared on any of those maps. If you had showed us then that there was only a 15-foot or a 10-foot or a 20-foot buffer, we never would have agreed to that in the first place. Further, there's no prohibition, whether it's in a no-cut zone or a no-build zone, of planting trees. You're arguing about planting arbivitae's in a buffer zone. That benefited it.
But it still wasn't on your property, though, sir. I'd like to bring this back into the context of the board for a while. Does any members of the board have any questions or inquiries at this time that either like to ask any of the lawyers that are participating in this discussion?
Jim, I have a quick question. When was the last time it was surveyed? Where these marks are now, when was the last date of survey? And wouldn't, isn't a survey required anytime any property changes hands?
No.
No.
Dave, there was a survey done in 2010 when the previous variance for the other fence, the neighbor's fence, was done. So that would be the previous one that the zoning board looked at prior to this survey, which is for the neighboring property. But they both ordered Mr. Elliott's property.
So Joe, the 2010 survey mirrors the 2020 survey that we have in front of us?
Okay.
Is that right?
They are similar. So it's showing more of Three Nickelby, because that's where the fence is. But it shows, it does show similarly the cedars, the chain-linked fence, and the shed over the property line in the buffer zone.
Okay.
I think that's what you're trying to ask.
Thank you.
Any other members at this time? Mary?
Question. First of all, I have a question about the seeker.
Thank you.
And I'm not certain really what the, I mean, is a seeker required? Do we, I mean, is there something that we are that we need to comply with at this point before we can come to any decision?
To the best of my knowledge, the town attorneys did not determine that this was an unlisted seeker. That they, because I have no paperwork on it.
You do.
I do?
He's correct. Both in 2010 with the previous variance and at this point, they listed as unlisted and does not require any more review. However, it does require review from the planning department.
Oh, okay. I do apologize. For whatever reason, I don't have anything on seeker.
Okay, so that's one question. And the other question, Joe, maybe you can answer, it has to do with the building permit. Does his building permit state that he cannot put a fence?
No. The way I would look at that is, it's your opinion, but we do not issue permits for fences.
And that was my understanding, but it was brought up by the attorney, the other attorney.
Yeah, whether or not you would consider a fence a structure or not is up to you. But I can tell you that we don't issue permits for fencing at all. That would definitely push it into a structure, for sure. But that's, you know, there are also definitions in the zoning law. I don't have that in front of me, so I don't want to quote that or anything like that, but that would be what I would tell you.
Mike, do you have any, anything to add to that, or?
Well, I'm looking at this, Mary, and it appears to me that, you know, obviously, we've got multiple violations of this zone or this buffer zone, okay? Number one, done by the variance at three. Number two, by, I guess, Tim's prior owner over there. The, you know, the purpose of the buffer, obviously, was to, you know, just be that, to be a buffer between the properties, but we do now have a buffered area. The, one of the things I wanted to clarify, and maybe Victor can do that for me, is that through the 25-foot right-of-way, is there a plan to put a fence on that waterbelieve right-of-way, Victor?
Yes, my client has gotten permission, my client has gotten permission to put the fence over the 25-foot east main road.
Okay, and you got that from the City of Waterbelieve and/or the?
Not from the city. You got it from the City of Waterbelieve. And I want to, I'd like to point something out. I just found in my file, Mr. Elliott mentioned that there was never a map produced. I have in my hands a map that was given to my client's other attorney, Mr. Chuck Rosenstein, and he got it from Mr. Elliott. And this is an eight-and-a-half by 11. It's a map of Seven Eva Street, which I believe is his property, certified to Wayne D. and Maureen A., and I don't, it doesn't have the rest, to Lawyer's Title Insurance, North Star Bank of Upstate, North Star Mortgage and their successors, building location Lot 7 Eva Street. And it shows the building. It shows the setbacks, front and rear. So to say now that no map was ever produced of that lot is clearly wrong. And I can produce it to the board for your review. And I and I can produce it to the board for your review.
If I could be heard on that matter, the map he's referring to was a map when the house was built, I believe in nineteen eighty six. Long before there was any buffer zones, long before there was the buffer zone was created in two thousand four. This doesn't have anything to do with the buffers. It's a map when the house is built that the previous owner had done. And there were never any stakes or uh when I moved in. Further, on the building permit issue, the building permit for the construction of the house specifically stated. And Mr. Brown agreed to it that he would not construct a fence in the no cut, no build zone. As part of the building permit for the house, not a building permit for the fence. We're getting confused about that. And that was just six, seven months ago. And he agreed to that then to get the building permit for the house. No built, no construction of a fence and no cutting in the uh no cut zone.
Which is exactly why we're in front of the board right now.
If I if I if I just may add to uh Mr. Elliot, um, I have also been provided by Mr. Elliot. Uh, copies of email exchanges between him um and uh town attorney Mike Majuli. Uh, confirming the information that he just provided to the board. That the building permit would be issued uh with some form of statement that there would be no fence in the uh buffer area.
I I would just like to speak to that. I'd like to read everyone the exact language that was put in there because it's a little different than what you've mentioned. So the condition that was put says will comply with the variance conditions. And as long as he expressly agrees never to cut or build in the no cut, no build zone. That's the exact language that was put in.
And Kim, I do apologize. I did find the seeker. Our town attorney did indicate that this is a type two seeker. Thank you.
Well, folks, you know, we have a situation here where obviously there are multiple violations that are into this buffer zone, number one. But number two, I don't think anybody has a problem with the public safety issue of the. Of the dead trees coming down, which are falling on people's property or the house or whatever. The uh, you know, things are uh change as we go along, particularly the when you come to public safety. So I assume that none of the participants here would have an objection to taking down the dead trees to prevent an accident or uh something happening to uh someone on the property. The uh, but again, it becomes a situation where uh what's a better fence? Is it natural vegetation? Is is it the fence back there? The uh, you know, the uh, again, a situation where. I mean, it it it, you know, it it's an interesting file in that uh there appears to be a lot of different controversy about the situation. But in my mind, the uh, you know, we've got multiple violations in this in this buffer. The uh, if we're going to enforce the buffer against the applicant, are we going to enforce against it's against all of the neighbors? Remove your encroachments uh at that point in time. So that that's another issue that the the board would have to consider. The uh, but it's just not a clear situation. The in my mind, the uh, you know, if Jim, if you wish, we can adjourn and uh get everybody a chance to take a look hard at the at the documents and. Uh, even do a findings if necessary in the matter. But the uh, in my mind, the uh, you know, I if in fact the city of Water Belie has granted that the fence situation can come over. And really, the only issue is if they have to dig or replace that, they can take the fence down. Uh, obviously at that time, which is typical of what we see in uh pool construction and that type of thing in different places. But the uh, uh, but tell me, what's what's the big objection to the fence? I mean, you've got a fence and the uh, you know, if the thing is going to be harmonious, the uh, what's the problem?
Like the uh stuff that you're claiming were um encroachments in the buffer area were put up before that was a buffer area. Except for the dog pen, which we didn't know that was in the buffer zone. Because the maps we were provided didn't show that we were already in the buffer zone with the mowing.
Oh, I understand that, but no one you no one has removed anything from that buffer zone afterwards, right?
No one removed any. I'm not sure what you're getting at, Mike.
In other words, the buffer, you established the buffer situation, but you didn't take any improvements, creations, fences, uh sheds, whatever. That they come out of that forever wild buffer area, right?
Correct, because we didn't know they were in it because the maps we were provided didn't show that they were in the buffer zone. We didn't think it was there.
Well.
We provided a copy of a survey. We take the surveyor at his uh face value. And we expect the buffer zone starts from there forward to in this thirty foot area. We thought we were getting thirty feet on top of this. And the quid pro quo was the neighbors get the benefit of the buffer zone. If you put up a fence, we've lost the buffer zone. We're staring at a fence then. So how are we getting the benefit of a buffer zone if we're staring at the back of a fence? He's getting the benefit of the buffer zone then. And frankly, if a fence up, he can cut down whatever he wants to, and we'll never be able to tell if he did it or not because the fence is there blocking it.
Well, you've got a situation here where obviously the buffer zone has become an issue. Okay, the uh frankly, I would encourage the applicants to to further converse about this matter and see if a reasonable resolution can be reached. Uh, in the in that regard. The uh, you know, the uh, the screening can come both ways, fencing and and vegetation. So the uh, uh, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So, you know, it's hard to be able to say to this applicant, you can't do anything in the buffer when we've got other uh encroachments onto the buffer already. I don't know. It's a.
Was there any Victor, was there any indication for the people that live in number nine? Did they raise an opinion on this one way or the other?
No, they're they have no objection. They were happy to move their fence when my client told them what their encroachment was. And I've asked him to remove a dead or dying tree. It's kind of leaning towards their property. They're fearful that it's going to fall under their property, which my client has agreed to do. But he didn't want to do it until he came in front of this board. That's why this board is created under the law to grant relief from the strict letter of the law. Uh, in of your previous uh conditions, so.
So so I mean, I don't want to sound argumentative or anything, but Mr. Elliot, your your concern over fifteen foot of fencing. Uh, that would have but your property versus the, I don't know how many feet, seventy feet of fencing that a butts number nine, which apparently has no objection to. Is that correct?
I don't know that he has no objection to it. I haven't heard that from him.
Victor just Victor just stated that he did.
Victor, did Jean call you and tell you he had no objection? Do you have something in writing from Jean saying he has no objection?
I do not. But all I can tell you is that my client spoke to him when they found that his fence was encroaching. And uh, he was willing to remove it, in fact, did remove it. And asked him to remove the dead tree. Uh, obviously, everyone got notice of this application. And uh, so to the simple answer your question, Ken, I did not call this guy and say, you have a problem with it. But he certainly can.
I did speak to him when the issue first came up and we went to Mike Majuli and Mike. Uh, put the stipulations in the building permit. At that time, he was very happy about that. So he expressed to me that he did not want a fence there and he wanted to those stipulations to be put in the building permit. I can't speak for why he didn't appear here tonight. I didn't even know this was on a Zoom tonight. I was, I thought it was first and third Thursdays or such. I didn't know there was a special meeting on Zoom on Wednesday. Maybe he's not aware of it either.
I assume, Victor, that was referenced in the letters that went out. Is that correct?
Um, Tim took care of this.
Yes, yeah.
Dave, that neighborhood has been, I think they've been notified multiple times.
Yeah.
On this because unfortunately with COVID, we had to keep adjourning this. So it's not a new case in any shape or form, and I know that the neighbors do know about this. Not to mention it's on the website. It's in the spotlight.
I Jim, I have one thing I just want to add.
Yeah, please do, Jim.
Before we wrap up, uh, people have mentioned the trees. And there is an agreement that was made between the planning department and the owner, which is Mr. Brown. On July fourteenth. And Sean's words are per planning and economic development. The owner is okay to remove dead trees in the no cut area that poses a safety hazard. And any additional trees not obviously dead need to be professionally evaluated before taking further action, work performance document. The need to maintain a safe area, maintenance allowed is allowed in the no cut area for the purposes of safety only. So there's an existing agreement basically between the planning department and this owner to uh allow for some trimming and removal of those trees. Obviously, it's in the middle of winter, so probably shortly uh next month or two. We would be able to go out there and look at some of the issues uh with the trees and work out some of the problem areas that Mr. Brown and some of the neighbors have.
Even if nothing is done here tonight, you can still go forward with dealing with the trees that are 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 hazardous. Is that correct?
Correct.
So board members, I'd like to get some sense as to how you feel about this. If you, I mean, we have a couple of options ahead of us. We can adjourn this without making a decision tonight. For further research and discussion, we can approve it. We can deny it. We can approve it in part in condition. Um, where would you like to go with this at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Kirk.
My my thinking is I I need a little bit more time to uh kind of think it over. Um, and probably, you know, need need more, need some input from the legal side, you know. If we go either way, is that a create a issue legally? So I would, I would prefer adjourned it and uh. Have a little bit more info.
Thank you, Kirk.
I would second that.
Okay, you know, I you know, I'm oftentimes reminded of my colleague, David Rosenthal, who always reminds us that he likes to see the neighbors kind of work these things out ahead of time. And this seems to have a very uh poisonous kind of uh of of attitude at this point in time that I don't think that benefits any of the neighbors in this particular area. So Michael, do Michael, question to you, do we adjourn? Close it, adjourn it? Uh, what's the best advice you can give us at this time?
Well, I I don't know that there's any additional testimony that's going to be required. But I would request from counsel the uh that they if they uh want to, they can submit to us a uh a short legal memorandum on their on their points of the situation. The uh, but I it's it's not an easy call and I frankly, I think that that we should take some additional time uh to evaluate the situation. Take a look at the case law, the uh, and see what could be done here. The uh, to me, the, you know, obviously the we have no fence ordinance in in the town of Colony. The uh, you can build whatever you want. We don't regulate that situation. We get it, do get into the issue of whether a fence is a a building or a structure under the definition situation. And I don't know exactly. I don't think we define that in the definitional section of the land use law. The uh, but that maybe that's something that we need to do. The uh, but uh, at the moment, I would encourage counsel to uh, you know, to uh feed us any additional case law information, whatever uh their situation would be. And uh, you know, we'll come to the point where we'll bring it on probably. Four weeks, I I would think, Jim, or so the uh, you know, uh, at that time to give that to everybody adequate time to do it, even six weeks. I mean, nobody's putting a fence up to the ground at this point in time, so the uh. So, you know.
Yeah, I think that and it still allows them to take the trees down in the interim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From what Joe said.
So I have no problem with the trees. You've got a public safety issue with the deadfall, okay? The uh, I don't think that uh anybody has a problem with that. The uh, the question in my mind is that uh, you know, is the fence a structure? The uh, is this, you know, uh, should we be enforcing th- this situation when we have these other encroachments? That's that's the other problem that I'm looking at. The uh, but I think we'll need a little time. I think we need to take a look at the case law. I would encourage Andy and Tim and uh Vic to send us anything that uh they think would be helpful in us uh coming to that decision. The uh, and uh, I may do a findings, may not do a findings. We uh, but certainly the board needs more time and a little more information to get their arms around this one, so.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask Joe too, if 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 in your long history with the town, uh, have we made distinctions between buildings? Such as sheds and construction as opposed to a fence? I mean, my my memory tells me if we're going to prohibit the building of fence, we're going to say no fences. We're not going to say no building. So I'd like to know if you have any historical, you know, contribution to offer in that particular matter also.
Uh, I would agree with that. That that should be very clear because it's so vague. Um, I would say that in my impression, building does not include fences. Buildings include sheds, decks, pools, uh structures, because a fence can technically be. You know, a row of rocks or, you know, different types of barriers. We don't regulate that stuff. Uh, and fences are temporary. They're they're generally something that can be moved.
I mean, would a stone, you know, you know, would a hand-built stone wall be considered? You know, I mean, you raise these interesting questions that we've never had to deal with in this particular context, which may need some additional clarification going forward.
Right, we generally don't look at any of that stuff as considered a building. So any sort of barrier structurally like that, even retaining walls, we do not regulate.
Thank you. Well, we have a motion that Kirk made and I believe Tracy seconded it.
Do we have a date?
Oh, what, Don, you're raising your hand?
One thing, uh, can I just read in the record the definition for a buffer area, just for the record?
Sure.
Uh, buffer area, open spaces, landscaped areas, fences, walls, firms, or any combination. They're uh used to physically separate or screen the use of a property from another so as to visually shield or block noise, lights, or other nuisances. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
So fences are included in the buffer area definition.
In a buffer area. But not as a building. Okay, well, well, we'll.
So Jim, I have the the uh adjournment. What date were you looking to adjourn it to?
Michael, what'd you say, six six weeks?
I think six would be would be fine. The uh, that's give everybody adequate time.
So that's March thirty first.
That should be all right. I would think the uh, at that time, the. Hopefully, we'll be to regular meetings sometime soon, so.
All right, so March thirty first is when it is tentatively scheduled for.
Got it. Remember, we had this originally scheduled for January seventh.
I think it was back in November, actually. Legal notice.
So, okay, well, we have a motion.
Mister, Mister Chair.
Yes, Andy, quickly, we have a motion.
If I may briefly, I I just I just not, I wasn't speaking on the motion. I thought you passed it. I just wanted to thank Joe and Kim for helping me out and making sure I was able to participate tonight. I wouldn't have been able to be here without them, and I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, well, we'll we'll take a vote. Uh, Member Nardililo.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Swanson.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Vigiani.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Rosenthal.
With the motion.
Thank you, Member Hong.
With the motion.
And the chair votes with the motion. It's hereby approved and we will discuss this matter again on March thirty first.
Jim, one clarification. Are we closing the hearing?
We have one more case.
No, 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 not tonight.
This case, yeah.
Michael, why don't you just explain what that means as opposed to adjourning so I mean for the members understand?
Yes, well, basically, if we close the case, that means that we can take no additional proofs. Okay, the uh, but we would allow uh briefs to come in, but there would be no testimony on the record anymore. The uh, if we leave the case open, that does give the applicant and or objectants an opportunity to be heard further at the next adjourned date.
Chairman.
Yes, Nick.
This is Nick. Uh, just personally, from my opinion, uh, I might find it helpful to keep it open.
I agree.
Okay, so Joe, let the motion reflect that we're gonna, we're not closing the case. It's it's been adjourned.
Okay.
Right, Michael?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, I want to thank everyone for your patience during this particular moment, and we're going to move on to our next case.
Thank you all.
Thank you, which is Old Loudon Road. Is someone here, oh, it's Victor.
I'm here.
You're you're not getting off that easy.
Thank you.
Take notice, the Town of Colony Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a televised hearing on the seventeenth of February, twenty twenty one, seven P M. To hear the appeal of Victor Cavanaro for Kevin uh Kevin Kavanaugh from the decision of the Building Department Manager for the Town of Colony. Denying him a building permit for the premises located at one forty seven dash one four nine Old Loudon Road. The proposal to allow patrons from the funeral home to utilize the adjacent single family home for purposes of gathering and for temporary overnight stays in a single family residential zone is an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use as stated in the Town of Colony Land Use Law, Article Eight, Sections one ninety dash thirty four B, sub one, sub A. Upon the request for the variance for the provisions of the Code of Town and Colony, Chapter one ninety to permit such construction and use and a secret determination for such appeal. To protect the public safety during the state of emergency triggered by COVID nineteen, this public hearing will take place via video conference. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the chairman during the hearing. Any member of the public wishing to listen and view this meeting, please visit the town's YouTube channel to watch a live stream. The affidavit of publication is noted. And like once again, there is no additional seeker is a type two seeker requiring no further review. Victor, you're on.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. So this property is at one forty seven dash one. So this property is at one forty-seven dash one forty-nine Old Loudon Road. I'm sure everyone knows this property, Kavanaugh Funeral Home. It's, uh, been there for many, many years and as my rider sheet says, um, this goes back to nineteen fifty-eight where a use variance was granted to allow the building of what was a church to be utilized for a funeral home mortuary with, with remodeling for that purpose. So we go back a number of years and then use variants were granted again in sixty and sixty-two to allow the use of pre-existing building to be used for an Alex Lodge, meeting place and club room. And then in nineteen seventy, the building was allowed to be used, rented and used for fraternal in relig- or religious organizations for meeting rooms, club rooms, serving food and legal beverages. And in nineteen ninety-two, the zoning board granted an expansion of the previous use variance to allow a three thousand square foot chapel addition to the non-conforming funeral home, all located within what was an A two zone, which is now an SFR zone. And the variance also allowed renovations to the existing building. In nineteen ninety-eight, another variance was granted to expand the non-conforming use to allow accessory parking on an adjacent lot that the current owner, Mr. Kavanaugh purchased, which allowed for accessory parking. So if you look at this site plan, it's, uh, it can be pretty confusing, but you see where Old Loudon Road is and you see where the funeral home is. You see the one-story addition and the one-story funeral home. And then around it, you'll see the parking. And then to the left of this, you'll see the lot that my client purchased back in the nineteen nineties and got an expansion of the non-conforming use to allow that home to be taken down and to be used for accessory parking. So the, the parcel also enclo- includes Mr. Kavanaugh's home, which is right next door to the funeral home, which is, uh, you can see it on the map. It's a very lovely home. I've been in there many, many times. And, um, so it, it's a unique piece of property. It's all one piece. It sits on this two-acre parcel and it's unique because it's both used as a funeral home for wakes and funerals as well as personal residence for Mr. Kavanaugh. I cited a number of Pellet Division Third Department cases that I've used in before this board and many other boards on multiple occasions, which essentially says that where a variance is granted, uh, the use permitted becomes conforming in the effect of the variance is to give the landowner a license to permit to use this property in a manner otherwise violent of the, violative of the zoning ordinance. I'm not going to read these cases. Your counsel knows what they say. What my client is asking to do is to, excuse me. I'm in a meeting right now. You can't come in. I'm sorry, someone just came into my office. Kind of weird at this time of night. Um, so anyway, um, let me get back to my thoughts here. What my client would like to do is utilize his home uh, on the subject property for continued single-family use, but utilizing the property for the benefit of the families that my client uh, represents uh, in his funeral home for wakes and funerals. Many times, uh, they'd like to get prepared before the, the wake. Uh, there typically isn't any rooms in the funeral home for that. He'd like to use the home for that. Uh, coffee, donuts, sandwiches, and things of that nature. There's also a proposal, uh, to allow uh, the family and the family members of, you know, bereaving family members uh, and relatives that are there for funerals sometimes come out of the area, uh, to stay. This is not a bed and breakfast. It, it's more like a, a Ronald McDonald house where folks that aren't able to afford staying in hotels and motels when this happens can utilize this temporarily. Uh, there's going to be no fee for this. He's not charging for this. It's simply an added benefit to the clientele that he represents. Uh, there's no modifications that would be done whatsoever to the external or internal part of this property. It is as-is, where-is, nothing changes. And we feel that this modification of the previously granted multiple variances would certainly not have any adverse effect on the surrounding neighbors. Uh, he's only going to be using this for the people that are there already, uh, who are there for wakes and funerals. And I feel that i- it's a very legitimate request. Uh, and as I said before, it's not going to be used for a bed and breakfast. He's not going to be charging for this. It's simply a benefit to help his clientele and the families who are, you know, bereaving during this, uh, these terrible times when they have to wake, uh, a family friend or relative and, uh, then have to go through the, the funeral. So that's essentially it in a nutshell, uh, you know, just make note that my papers are, that I submitted are made part of the record and I answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Victor. Uh, Kirk, why don't you start us off?
Okay, I, just, uh, one question. So this, uh, this house we are talking about, is that the one above the funeral home?
Yes.
The two, two-story?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Nick?
Um, yeah, so, so there'd be no, no renovations, as you said, to the house at all.
Um, correct.
And it wouldn't be any, did you mention it would be any kind of a little use for, for the owner and, um, visitors or guests, or would it be strictly for visitors and guests?
No, it'd be used for a home by my client who, who owns Mr. Kavanaugh, who lives there and who owns a funeral home. It would be a distant added benefit to his, his clientele. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Tracy?
I don't have any questions.
Mary?
I have no questions, but I think it is a terrific idea. I think a lot of times people do come in from out of town for, for services and I think it's a nice benefit to be able to offer them.
Thank you, David.
I have no questions. I just think it's a great idea for people to have a place to stay close by where they don't have to get a hotel, they don't have to travel, they don't have to get up, but it's closed by. I just think this is a novel idea and obviously he, he's other funeral homes throughout the country must do something similar, uh, but I think it's a great idea.
I have a question for Joe or Don. I'm not sure if this is deemed commercial or residential, but the deed for the variance is it only because he is asking to allow people to spit, stay overnight? I mean, if he was just going to offer coffee in Danish in the morning and people to freshen up, does that require a variance for the use of the property? Or, or is it the overnight stay that is at, that, that's the critical issue here?
It would be the overnight stay component. Um, anybody's allowed to invite people into their homes to have coffee and and, and Danish or whatever else. I mean, it's just being hospitable, especially if he's not charging for it. Um, you know, the, the overnight component, you know, in description appears to be along the lines of a, of a bed and breakfast when you have people stay overnight. Um, the fact that it's being offered up at no charge. Um, kind of, it's kind of like having somebody stay over at your house. I don't really understand the need for the, the variance, uh, if you're just going to do something for no charge. Um, usually if you're going for a variance with something that you're proposing to have people stay over your house that are, uh, you know, non-acquaintances, it's usually because you're, you're doing it for, uh, for profit, but if that's not the case here.
Thank you, Don. Kim, somebody who's just appeared on our screen named Victor Cabanero. It's not Victor's twin that I'm aware of.
Well, he got three Victors online here. We got Victor Victor. We have another Victor and somebody else that's just saying connected to audio. I'm not sure. Victor, do you have one of your staff members trying to?
Right, Victor, you want to help us out here with Victor Victoria?
I, I don't even know what you're talking about. I'm going to slide my, uh, he who's on here that's, uh, using my name.
How about the gentleman with the glasses with the tie on? Who, who might you be?
Uh.
You're muted.
Your mute is on.
Is that Zach?
Oh, Kevin, they're talking about you.
Nope, you're still muted, Kevin, or Victor.
Kevin.
Okay, all right, here we go.
That's Mr. Kavanaugh, AKA.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I didn't know about the mute button.
No, that's okay. I've, thank you, but I haven't had need your, your services yet, so.
That's all good.
Kevin, did you hear my presentation?
Did I what?
Did you hear my presentation?
I did. I heard, I've heard everything since the beginning of the, um, proposal, yes.
And if you agree with what I was saying about, you know, you just want to use this for your patrons for, you know, coming in the house, coffee, donuts, sandwiches, and, and there might be a situation where family that really don't have money, they can't afford things, they couldn't stay, you're not charging them for any of this stuff.
That's correct. What we have found is, uh, you know, serving some of my family, we have found the convenience of, of people just coming next door to the, uh, to the house after the funeral or after the wake or coming to the, uh, coming to the house prior to the, the visitation, having, like I said, bagels, coffee, um, offering that. It, the convenience where people don't even have to get in their car, they walk next door and are able to come on over and have some snacks or, or just get away from the funeral home setting, you know what I mean, is then is kind of what initiated this whole thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public want to comment on this? I mean, we have another.
We have another Victor.
We have another Victor.
Victor, we have three Victor.
Lots of Victor.
You're on as Victor.
It's like hail, hail the Victors. It's like the English song.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, so in this case, since he does not charge, does he still need a variance from, Don was just saying, looks like he does not need this variance then?
Well, if I can be heard a little bit, maybe I can answer a few questions, so.
Please do, Michael.
Uh, uh, Vic and, uh, the, uh, how long, the property, obviously, the, the house is, is freestanding, right? And it's in the back. It's not connected to the funeral home?
It is not connected.
Okay, Kevin. The, uh, and at any time was the house the funeral home?
Oh my God, I guess back in the, uh, sixties and seventies, Mr. Dufresne would have visitations at the house as well as at the, uh, funeral home. That's, you know, but was it ever used as the funeral home exclusively? No.
Okay. The, I mean, you have two structures on the property. Obviously, the, uh, the funeral home is, uh, it's SFR zone, as you know, single-family residential situation there. The funeral home obviously is, uh, a permitted use at this point in time in matter, but the house is single-family. But part of our concern is that the, uh, that the expansion, even though the, the proposed use, I think, is a nice idea situation, are we changing your house, which is a single-family residence, to a commercial building? The, uh, that's the interesting question. The, uh, so if in fact you were asking me to, uh, to do, uh, this for the funeral home, for, for some rooms in the funeral home, I don't have a great problem, but I'm a little bit concerned that the, the concept of turning what is exclusively a single-family residence into a multi, into a, a, a commercial support, uh, facility situation, the, uh, is, uh, not a permitted expansion of, uh, any use here. It's always been an SFR house. It's, it's still in an FSR zone situation. The, uh, and while the proposed use, I think, is a nice situation for the people, my concern is that we've got a longstanding single-family home in an SFR zone that you're asking to make a commercial use out of at this time, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the funeral home itself has no rooms that would be, uh, accustomed to having, you know, serving food or having, uh, beverages or what have you. It's not set up that way. Like, there's not a designated room, nor is there one that I could use for that, that use. And New York State.
Kevin, would a little addition, uh, on the funeral home be a?
Not at this point in the game, Michael. I've, I'm, I'm done with that part of my life, but, um, yeah, New York State, uh, the Health Department started allowing funeral homes to offer food and beverages to families about five years ago. And, you know, I get asked that every once in a while and I just don't, I'm not set up that way as far as the funeral home itself goes. So that's why I'm hoping to offer it on the property.
But you're living in this house, right?
Correct.
Okay, the, uh, do you plan to move out of the house and just use it for the, for the funeral, uh, at juncture?
I do not. There's three living rooms in this house and I just wanted to, you know, have one of the living rooms be able for families to come on over and have pizza or have a, a bagel and coffee before a funeral or after a wake, have a little, um, you know, instead of getting in the car and driving to, you know, uh, the local restaurants.
Well, yeah, yeah. This, and my concern is simply legal. I have no problem with the, with your intended uses, Kevin. The, uh, the, the problem here is whether we're, uh, under law, we can allow this. Use variances are a mountain to climb, as Vic I'm sure has told you. The, uh, and when you're asking us now to take what has been a dedicated single-family home and make it available for a commercial use situation, uh, that's something that I have to look at, I think. That, that, that's not an easy, uh, resolution of the matter. I mean, the, the proposed use is fine. The, uh, what I'm saying to you though is that the funeral home is not the home, you know, you're, you're not the same building, is what I'm saying to you here. So the, uh, so I think it's another one we got to look at, Jim, frankly, okay?
Yeah, Jim, I'm not sure if in this case it's appropriate, but you may want to look at the option of putting this as a home occupation as opposed to a use variance type of issue. The home occupation would stop with the, uh, with this particular, uh, uh, user.
Use.
And, uh, it is something that would not require the use variance criteria to be, uh, it wouldn't have to be held to that criteria. It would be a lower, lower bar to hold on to or to, uh, reject you, I apologize.
Understand, board members and Kevin, that if we grant a use variance here, that runs with the land. So the, uh, the question in my mind is that, let's say Kevin decides to shut down his business and some other business goes in there, is that house now subject to commercial use, uh, in this SFR zone? So that's the interesting question in my mind. And I think Joe has a good suggestion that, uh, because, don't forget those home occupancy or those home uses, uh, they are specific to the owner and are revoked about the, uh, at the time that the, uh, the person sells or gets out of the property situation. So my, my concern is really running with the land. That's what my concern is. And I think Joe's suggestion may be a good fix uh, to the issue, to allow Kevin to do what he wants to do, but yet not cast this thing in cement for all time.
Based on the description that was, that was just heard, it sounds like to me, it's, it's going to be a multiple people. We're not just talking a couple. So it sounds like to me that the area is going to be used almost like for assembly space.
Somebody's got to speak up.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear him either.
Can you talk a little louder, Don?
Hear me now?
No.
Not really low.
I think you turned your volume off.
Let me, uh.
Oh, that's a little better.
Let me go to Joe. Can, can you hear me now?
Yeah, just talk louder.
All right. So as I'm hearing the description here, it sounds like it's going to encompass a lot of people into the, into the space, uh, not just a few. So I don't know if you can consider it a home occupation, one. Two, that's, that's used for assembly. Regardless if you're charging people for it or not, it's, it's an expansion on the funeral home. Um, so, so whether you, you include it as an accommodation or not, Victor, you said that you're not doing, doing any renovations, but the, the New York State existing building code still kicks in a requirement for change of occupancy, which would, would, this would be considered a change of occupancy to the single-family home. So there could be some modifications that could be required because now we're looking to use that space as an area of assembly. So there's going to be, uh, requirements for accessibility um, in, in accessible bathrooms and stuff like that, so, um, as I'm hearing more about the, the description, there's more things that come into light here. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Victor, I think you had your light on.
Yeah, I, I listened to what Mike said and, and that's why I, I cited these cases that basically say that, you know, once a use variance has been granted. you know, once a use variance has been granted to a property, and remember, as I said, this is one parcel, it's never been separated, it's never been subdivided, it's always been used as these multiple, you know, first church, then a funeral home, then it got variances for other fraternal uses. It's not a separate piece of property, it's the same piece. So what I'm saying is that I believe the case is stamped with a proposition that once you prove the use variance criteria, you are not required to prove use variance criteria again. And so this would be an expansion of a prior use variance, that use variances that were granted, so I think, I think the cases would say that you can do this. I can't speak to what Don just had to say, because that's a building code issue, it has nothing to do with, with the variance application for an expansion, but clearly since the 1950s, this property has gone, undergone a metamorphosis of uses and variances and, and plus expansions, albeit on the, the side where the funeral home is currently, but you know, I, I think, I think the purpose for what this is, 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 is very de minimis in the sense that it's, you know, I'm not talking about large gatherings of people, and I think Kevin can speak to that more than I can, but I just don't want to lose our mark on what we're trying to do here and why we're trying to do it. And I understand what Mike's saying too, but that, that's just what I wanted to mention quickly.
Thank you, Victor. Board members, any other questions here?
I have a question.
Mary, thank you.
The home and the funeral home, they were not built at the same time, is that correct?
The original buildings were built in the twenties, nineteen twenty-four. And an expansion on the house was done in nineteen ninety-five, and the funeral home that I put the expansion on, nineteen ninety-two. So they were not, you know, the additions weren't put on at the same time, however, the original buildings, this was the, the original St. Ambrose Church, the funeral home, and my home was the original St. Ambrose Rectory, where the priest lived. That's why it's all on one parcel, that's why it was all deeded the same, and it's been, it's been one parcel since then.
Thank you.
Joe, remember we did that daycare center? Is, is that the, the property that's directly adjacent to it? Is that the daycare?
Yep, that's right next door, used to be the art studio.
Right. And that's within the single family residential zoning district too, right?
Yes.
The day, the daycare center, right?
There's, there are multiple commercial uses in the Old Loudoun Road area that are, and single family zones, but are non-conforming.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
I'll pose a question if I can to Kevin and to Victor. The, if the board saw fit to approve this, would you consent to a condition that if Kevin sells the business or goes, the funeral home goes out of business, that, that allowance that we would give you would be terminated? In other words, that, that we would say to you that, okay, the proposed use is okay, but if the, if the operation ceases, okay, that the use of that single family home would revert to the occupants at that point in time and their, and their bus, not their business invitees, their guests.
So if we were to close up the funeral home, that, that, the, the house would not be able to be used for any commercially? Yeah, I'd be fine, I'd be fine with that. Victor?
That's, I agree, one hundred percent.
Mike, what if, what if the funeral home and the residence were sold to someone else?
Well, that, that's, that's the other issue, Mary, the, you know, if in fact we approve this and it, and it stays a funeral home, okay, the, at that time, that's the other question that we'd have to look at. The, you know, obviously Kevin can agree that, that would go down, but are we going to face a claim by the new owner that he's entitled to that use of the house situation? So the, probably we are okay if the applicant and counsel agree that upon sale of the business, that, that use terminates when Kevin says, has sold the business. But I don't really want to be a test case and, and figure that, figure that one out, but I, I do applaud Kevin for the use, I think it's a nice function for, for people, they're under stress, obviously, and that type of situation, the, but the, you know, again, it's a situation, my concern is not so much what Kevin is proposing, it's what the future lies, okay, that's.
Michael, I basically agree with you, I guess, in, in, in deference to the Hotel Association, I would, I have no problem with the, some limited entertaining, it's the overnight guest situation that seemed to cause a greater concern, you know, I mean, it's, it's housekeeping, it's all kinds of other aspects that come under review, and even though Victor said it's not typically viewed as a bed and breakfast, I can't help but thinking of it as a bed and breakfast, except for the fact that there'd be no, no, no charge for the uses of the facilities. Just my thought.
So, so, yeah, so, so counsel, do you, do you need more time to maybe do a little bit of research?
Well, I'd have no problem with that, the, we lawyers, we love a German, so it keeps us working. But in any event.
Love you but me.
The, I have no problem with putting it over the, to take part or look at it, the, but you know, I think everybody understands my concerns as we move down the road here, it's not, it's not Kevin's proposal, that's the problem. It's, it's what the granting of a use variance raises here, the, so the, but again, if it's going to be an overnight situation, Don may be right that there's going to be other building issues that have to be looked at by the, by the building department. Would you consider, Kevin, just using it for, for hospitality and not for overnight stays?
Absolutely, I had that conversation with Victor earlier today, and I said, you know, the, the bedroom use is not the, is not the biggest concern, but the convenience of a family being able to walk next door and have a cup of coffee and a pastry or a, you know, a sandwich or, you know, a slice of pizza, that would be a much greater benefit, you know, because now I find them getting in their cars and leaving, you know what I mean, and coming back. Sometimes they're eating food in the parking lot because I don't, I'm not set up in the funeral home for food service, you know, I mean, the funeral home just doesn't have that spot or that room, so therefore, sometimes, you know, they're, like I said, they're sitting out in their car or they're out in the parking lot eating McDonald's or Burger King or whatever, so that they, you know, they, you know, after a long day, you know what I mean, a three or four hour wake or, you know what I mean? And I just sound like I said with my families, right, yeah, I've had, I had a nephew die two years ago, aunts, uncles, so on and so forth, and the convenience of being able to walk next door and, you know, not leave the property has been really what brought this to the table.
So, so Kevin, you'd be agreeable then to modifying your request to basically eliminate overnight stays?
Yep, absolutely.
I think that throws a whole new light on this, from Mr. Campbell's and Gary's comments.
That's my question, I mean, if, when we look at the, the, the request for the variance, it talks about allowing the patrons for the purposes of gathering and temporary overnight stays, if the temporary overnight stays are eliminated and the, and just the gathering aspect is applicable, does that still require variance? That's my question to the town and out, and to the lawyers.
I, I, go ahead, Don.
That was still required.
Yeah, I think we need a little more time to go over some of the details. So I would suggest we adjourn it, at least for a short period of time, to go over some of those details and bring it back.
Ward, how do you feel?
Timeframe?
Well, I don't think we need to take this into March, I don't think this is as complicated as Nickelby. Would it, two, Michael, what do you think, two weeks?
I think, yeah, why don't we do four weeks, Jim, that should work.
Okay.
Okay.
Four weeks? So, Joe, what does that make it land on?
Well, we're in March seventeenth, March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, Kevin will not be here.
I may not be here.
We don't talk about Joseph's Day, do we?
That's the nineteenth, that's the nineteenth, Michael.
So seventeenth, that's what I have it on for the adjournment.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman?
Do we have a motion in a second?
I, I just a quick, a quick question, I don't know if this is for Victor or Kevin or, or for Building Department. Any issues with like food preparation or catering or anything like that? Kevin, do you foresee, like, people eating food that's brought in from an outside vendor, like catered? Or, or is it not to that scale or extent?
Uh, that's a good question, I mean, I can see people bringing in, you know, those sub platters, you know.
Lighter, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, things like, you know, a panazidi or things of that sort, I could see that happening, yes. We're not going to be putting, we're not going to be putting a tent up in the, in the front yard and having, you know, having a full blown with a band and catering, that kind of thing, no.
Well, what's the bar down the road that that's changed?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I didn't know if that changed anything for Joe or for Don as far as what's allowable.
Uh, not really, but I think that details what Don actually has to look into specifically, is where they're going to be doing that and to what extent. Or the intent is to, to provide the food or to have it brought in? It's the, whether the intent is to provide the food or have it brought in, so we, we, we would need that clarification.
Or both.
Have it brought in.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Kirk?
Yeah, why don't I continue a tradition, make a motion to, to adjourn the case to March seventeenth?
Thank you, seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Mary, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor are journeying this to March seventeenth, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned to March seventeenth.
Thank you, board.
Any further business to come before the board tonight? Just remind everybody, we are meeting again a week from tonight, right? Kim?
Yep.
And pack, and packets will be available shortly.
I should have all of them.
Okay, everybody should have, so check your packets, make sure you have everything you need. And we're hereby adjourned, right? No, we need a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say something before you adjourn?
Oh, yes, Victor, thank you.
I know that this has been a Herculean effort by the board and more importantly, Kim, to try to make this work, and I think she did a fabulous job tonight. I've done dozens and dozens of Zoom meetings, Microsoft team meetings, Skype meetings, trials in Supreme Court. Kim, I got to hand it to you, you put your head to the grindstone and you did a beautiful job tonight.
Thank you very much, Victor, we do appreciate Kim's contributions.
I do too.
Second.
Oh, Kirk, you're making the motion?
Yes.
Adjourned, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Nick seconds, all those in favor say aye. Aye, we're hereby adjourned, see everybody next, next Wednesday.
Take care.
Okay.
Yeah, Kim, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.